We haven't opened it up, there's no.
Welcome, everyone. We'll give it a minute for people to be let in. All right, it looks like it peaked out there. Welcome, everyone, to our January 18, 2022, Oceanside Unified School Board meeting. We're going to go ahead and start tonight with a call to order at 6:00, I think it's 6:09 PM. And I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Raquel Alvarez. Present, I see her. Thank you. Mike Blessing.
Here.
Eric Joyce.
Here.
And Eleanor Evans.
Here.
Excellent. I'm glad everyone's here. Happy 2022. We're going to go ahead and start out tonight with a pledge of allegiance. So if you would put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks Eleanor for helping me out. Next time I'll let you do it.
I'd love to do it. Thank you for not pausing between one nation under God.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item. We have no public report of action. Take it in closed session. We are not done with closed session. We will be adjourning to closed session at the end of this board meeting. And back, pour it out after that. So moving on to item 2D, my favorite part, student representative. So let's see. Do you want to go ahead and let them up? We'll start with Surfside tonight. Do we have Evan Hemmerly out there?
I'm here.
Hey, Evan, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing great. Go ahead and tell us, tell us what's going on at Surfside.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Vitale and guests. My name is Evan Hemmerly and I'm the student representative for Surfside Educational Academy this evening. Congratulations to our December Students of the Month from Surfside, Travis Lomair from Surfside High School and Kira Camuto from Surfside Academy, Academy Independent Studying. Both students receive a certificate of recognition and a Surfside T-shirt. Kira and Travis have done a great job of establishing a positive reputation for themselves at Surfside. And their teachers speak very highly of their work. Great job, Kira and Travis. Congratulations goes out to Zitali Verde Gomez, Surfside's current recipient of the City of Oceanside Chamber of Commerce Rising Star Recognition. Zitali was selected as a senior student representative from Surfside High School. Despite some difficult hurdles experienced in her first years of high schools. Zitali was, has gained focus to achieve her academic goals at Surfside and has earned the respect of her teachers. After graduation, Zitali plans to attend a school of cosmetology. On Friday, December 17th, Surfside celebrated students once again during our traditional grad walk. Parents, students, and district dignitaries were in attendance to cheer each student as they walked down the hallway. Balloons, festive signs, and lots of words of congratulations were part of the special recognition for our early graduates. Way to go Sharks. Surfside High School has started their third quarter of the school year. Many students have already set their sights on early graduation as they work to stay on track to achieve their goal. Best to all Surfside High School Sharks this quarter. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. All right, we'll move on to our next student representative, Gabby Kimbrel from Oceanside High School. I see Gabby's name up there.
Dr. Begin, I promoted somebody named Kelly Kimbrel as that's the closest we have, but she's not responding.
All right, can we change the screen? Let's go over and do El Camino High School. And we have a new student representative, and I see her right there, Lily Tita. Hello, Lily.
Hi. Hi, congratulations on being the new student representative. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. And thank you to Board President Dr. Begin and the rest of the board members, to Superintendent Dr. Vitale and the rest of the executive staff, to all the presidents this evening for giving me the time to speak. My name is Lily Tita. I'm the ASB president and student representative from El Camino. Starting off with the week of December 6th to December 10th, the Wildcats participated in Battle of the Clauses, which consisted of a spirit week and lifetime activities that involved all classes competing against each other. Next, our tier cats competed at the USA Regional Seminarian Prize, bringing back two first-place wins in game day band tear and crowd leader division. Our athlete of the week for this week was Yone Davis from the boys' basketball varsity team, who averaged 18 points in the first two games of the season, five assists with nine rebounds. The following week of December 13th through December 17th was final week for EC. During finals week, pals had activities to help students with stress and anxiety, such as the threat of the room. The transformational confolson held their fifth annual holiday for hope here at the El Camino campus. The Holiday of Hope event seeks to encourage and spread love to students and their families from all over OUSC campuses with holiday gifts for both the students and immediate family members. Continuing summer 18th to January 7th was winter break for El Camino. During this time, our staff and students had time off for the holidays to spend it with their family and friends. Here's some highlights of our athletics of EC. Football seniors, all-stars were selected to play for the North team and ended with a big win on December 11. Boys' basketball beat Cornell out of 53-51 December night. Boys soccer tied Marietta 2-2 December night. Girls' basketball brought home two victories, beating Fallbrook 55-50 December 15th. And Marietta 76-46 December 22nd. Girls varsity basketball player Callie Cahala broke school's record for the most three-point shots during her time at EC. Girls soccer tied Mission Hills 2-2 December 10th. And girls water polo beat RBB 14 at the January 10th. Thank you so much for giving me the time to present this concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Lily. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we're moving to item 2E, approval of agenda. I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following item being removed from the agenda, item 8B. We're going to bring this back at our February board meeting for board approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda without item 8B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone? Aye, do I have everybody? All right. Anybody opposed? Right. The agenda's been approved. So moving on to item 3, reports. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitale for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to share that I was able to start my morning with the Chamber of Commerce at the Rising Star Event, where they celebrated four different students. They celebrated Daniel Cruz from Oceanside High School, Marlene Benitez-Vanegas from El Camino High School, Zitlali Valverde Gomez from Surfside Educational Academy, and Johnny Delores from Pacific View Charter School. It's an honor to listen to the students speak about their stories and what they have grappled with through their life, and all of these students are on target for graduation and will be eligible for scholarship money provided by the Chamber of Commerce through various donations. So thank you for starting my way, starting my day off so positively, and thanks to all who were able to attend and watch the students be recognized. I also want to acknowledge, people are aware that COVID-19 has had a recent resurgence throughout our country, and it is impacting Oceanside Unified as well. And I want to thank our staff for pitching in in every possible way to ensure that our students are in class, in school, in person, in a safe environment. I understand and acknowledge that it is taking a toll, but we are meeting the needs of students by providing safe classrooms, and I appreciate everything that everyone is doing. Please be aware that we are offering testing at five different locations in our district, five days a week. The specific information for every location and time of day can be found on our website, and also vaccine information can be found on our website. So please do use that as a resource to keep updated on everything regarding COVID-19. And with that, Dr. Begin, I pass it back to you.
All right, thank you for the report. I am going to go ahead and start with Board Member Raquel Alvarez.
Thank you. A little bit, not too much. It's kind of hard to still get around a little bit, but I was able to participate in the Holiday of Hope event, which was amazing. It was great to see different groups come in together to support our students. It was Oceanside Police Department, Oceanside Fire Department coming in with the trucks, and the school district came in, A Studio, the city housing. The great part of it was that they were able to be blessed with $800 per family, according with also a TC was able to collect, so they chose a family, basically from each of our school sites, that was presented by the staff of the school sites. And so then they were able to give them $800 in gift cards, but they were also given gifts of their choice. So they had a wish list, and the wish list was met. I think the best part of the night was one, they had the snow by Dr. Bonner. They had the snowflakes and folks and the dancing and everything. That was really cool. But I think the best part was that they were able to, because we had so many, the cheerleaders came in and got gifts, and so they were able to to give each of the families three gifts to pay forward to other people that they knew. So not only were they receiving something, but they were able to receive something to pay forward to someone else to show that they had been blessed with something. So that was pretty awesome and amazing. I was able to participate in the Surfside graduation and ringing of the bell. That was so awesome. I hadn't been able to go to one of those things in a long time. But because it's outside and it's one of those things that's just open air, and Mr. Francine made it possible for me to be able to be there, and it was just so awesome to see these graduates. They do it with so much love and so much passion. It was so great to see. I love it. You know, keep it up, Mr. Francine. It's awesome. I can't wait till the next one, actually. And I attended a safety and security meeting for our district, also a wellness committee meeting. Also participating or helping out with the food pantry at Oceanside High School. And it was great to see the news. I was watching the news last night. It's always so down because of everything going on, and it was great to hear one of our students, Papa. She's at Oregon. And she was the talk of the sports section last night. So one of our graduates was the talk of everything last night because she's just doing amazing. So kudos to her and congratulations because that was such an upbeat thing to see after all the negative and the the ugly part of the news that we have to listen to sometimes. So kudos to her and congratulations to the Papa family on being, you know, there to support her and everything that she does. So that's kind of it right now for me, and I am so excited that right now that we are where we're at. And please, 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 families, if you have any symptoms, please respect each other's space and just take care of yourselves, please. You don't want this. This is a long-term thing, and it's not fun at all. So please take care of your families and each other.
Thanks, Raquel. So we're going to move on to Eric Joyce. Would you like to share?
Sure. So I got to go to a couple of events over the last month. Holiday Hope, as was previously mentioned, and that was fantastic. Always a special event, always like the happiest, one of the happiest events of the year. Oceanside Firefighters Charity Fundraiser, which connects with our youth who are trying to go through the pipeline to become local firefighters, which is really exciting. And we want to make sure that they have that pathway, so that was really fun. The Christmas cuts and toys for kids in Crown Heights, which is a really cool event organized by local organizers that local barbers volunteered to come in and cut hair for kids in the anticipation of the holidays. And it was just a really positive event in Crown Heights, very fun again. And then this past weekend, the North San Diego County NAACP held its Day of Service on Saturday, so we were able to feed those who were unhoused, along with other community members who worked to honor Dr. King's memory through service. And then the prayer breakfast, which was yesterday. And again, it brought people together that were dedicated to carry on Dr. King's legacy here in North County, which absolutely included educational equity, which I think we're going to work hard to live up. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Moving on, Eleanor, would you like to share a board report?
Yes, yes, I would. Give me just a second. Okay. I also attended the Reverend Martin King Breakfast Prayer and the City of Oceanside Community Awards, and I'd like to congratulate our Carly trustee Eric Joyce for being nominated for the outstanding citizens with his contributions and hard work he's been doing in terms of uplifting Oceanside and making it a better place and ensuring that everyone is able to enjoy a positive quality of life. This is always a very special, special time for me because as an undergraduate, San Diego State, and I won't go into details, but basically, if you've been looking at YouTube, you see said, Dr. Martin Luther King coming to San Diego, May 29, 1964. And quite frankly, because of the efforts that I put forth, this is the reason why he was able to come to San Diego and what he spoke about in terms of world peace, brotherhood, everyone having a livable wage, and as well as the integration of our society. I also attended California Teachers Association State Council, where I was presented with a very detailed presentation on community schools and the community school model in which it was promoted that community schools in order to be sustainable and successful, and I firmly believe this myself, that it has to be a roundup situation, has to be teacher-driven, teacher-accepted, and in order for it to be successful. I attended a North County Prevention Coalition, NCPC, committee which basically focuses on the use and abuse of legal and illegal drugs. And what's interesting about this committee is that it seems to be always fundraising. They're associated with Tri-City Hospital, but because of their agenda, it really promotes our students in terms of having, again, making healthy decisions. Okay, I attended the CSBA California School Board Association meeting, and the conversation there did focus on COVID-19, and again, Oceanside Unified School District because of its very strong stance in being very active in attempting to eliminate COVID-19 among our students. So once again, we have one of the lowest rate of infection quarantine, and I'd like to thank the faculty, staff, leadership, parents and scholars in our community, in our community stakeholders for being consistent in protecting our district and moving our district forward. You know, we have state-of-the-art ventilation systems. Believe it or not, other school districts still have not been able to do that, even some of the more quote-unquote affluent school districts. We have the personal protective equipment. Again, they actually said, we don't have that. Okay. So, and of course, our policy of practicing safety based on science, you know, has enabled us to have the status, which I'm quite proud of. I also attended the Leon L. Williams County San Diego Human Relations Commission, and of course, there are several different concerns going on with the district, including bullying within the schools, especially the high school program, the sports program that's been going on. I'm sure you've heard some of the issues that have been, that the news has revealed in terms of other, on some of the other campuses and other districts. That's my report.
Well, Eleanor, you've been busy. All right. Hi, Mike. Do you have any report you want to share?
Just very brief, I have not been busy like you all there. I've been a little bit COVID-spooked a little bit, but I did, I did do the MLK Breakfast by Zoom, which was a little challenging because the broadcast was a challenge, but there were some definitely good events there. Congratulations to Eric and to Robbie Haas for being the winner this year of the MLK Service Award. So that's it.
All right, thank you, Mike. And I, like Mike, hunkered down with my family and spent the holidays. I wasn't out much. I did attend a Special Education Task Force meeting for Oceanside Unified, and we have some exciting things coming up. So we'll be hearing about them at future board meetings, I'm sure, but the stakeholders, huge thank you to the teachers, the support staff, the parents that are, and the administrators that are showing up to those meetings to make, make positive change. All right, moving on to item 3C, Oceanside Teachers Association. President Tiffany Ortega, would you like to share?
Hi, good evening. Sorry, you guys bumped my presentation. Sorry. Good evening. I'm Tiffany Cooper Ortega, and I'm honored to be able to report on behalf of the accomplished and esteemed members of Oceanside Teachers Association as their president. Next slide, thank you. I hope that everyone had a restful and reinvigorating break. It's certain that we all have to hit the ground running upon our return, so we're all buckling up. ODA members and leadership worked with OUSD on the Wellness Committee, Local Control Accountability Plan, SPED Task Force, and also caseload allocations for SPED. Additionally, members from the Teachers Association have participated with the furniture project found on tonight's agenda, both by piloting the furniture and by providing feedback and input on that project to Dr. Norman and to Business Services. As pandemic-related mandates from the state and county Department of Public Health are fluid, ODA continues to work with Dr. Spurts to understand and interpret the rapidly evolving CDPH guidances and with human resources to monitor and modify our safety protocols as needed. Next slide, please. Oceanside Teachers Association has been able to support members from our local association as they attended the CTA-sponsored events listed here, including a briefing on community schools that has ODA excited, given the implementation of our four community schools in OUSD, just as Eleanor mentioned. Next slide. Now I'd like to celebrate something fun, our amazing ODA members and some of the wonderful things that they're implementing in the district. So let me just say this, if you don't know Gina Grable from North Terrace K8 School, I don't know what's wrong with you, but also you should. She is a former Navy corpsman. She's an avid runner, English teacher, cross-country coach, a mother of two former OUSD students, a go-getter, and generally a breath of fresh air. Next slide, please. It was natural that Gina, who has participated in more than 60 half marathons, would provide guidance to sixth-through-eighth graders who elected to run at North Terrace. She not only teaches the group about the correct form, stretching, and nutrition associated with running, but she also teaches running etiquette and rules of the road because this group completes extended runs four days a week with Mrs. Grable running right alongside them. Next slide. In addition to the direct instruction provided in this elective, there are some more nuanced lessons as well. We're all familiar with Dr. Angela Duckworth and her extensive studies on grit and perseverance. So you'll find that these lessons not only apply in an academic setting, but also in team sports and sports accomplishments as a predictor of success. Next slide. So you really should take note of these future success stories because this group signed up and completed the Carlsbad Half Marathon on Sunday, January 16th. Pictured here, they are picking up their race bibs and participating in the race expo. Next slide. Twenty-three of her 25 students completed the half marathon of 13.1 miles. Some of these students in this picture ran more miles than they are old. The joy and accomplishment on their faces is inspiring to me and others. By the way, they also inspired four of their parents to sign up to complete the half marathon along with Mrs. Grable as well. So Mrs. Grable, North Terrace, and Running Tigers, thank you so much for this dose of inspiration. Next slide. I'd also like to focus my next spotlight on OUSD ODA members. Amidst the ever-changing CDPH guidances, the quarantine protocols, the timelines, there is consistency. There is stability. It can be found in the classrooms, playgrounds, hallways of OUSD, provided by the people who have the most direct contact with students. The teachers, the nurses, the support personnel, all of whom continue to provide education and support for OUSD students while not only advocating for the safety of their colleagues and students, but also while working to maintain their own safety and well-being. I just want to tell you, your dedication and professionalism is appreciated beyond any measure. Thank you so much, Dr. Begin, for your time.
Thank you. For that great report, and wow, North Terrace, way to go. All right, our next one is item 3D, and I'm excited to introduce the new president for the California School Employees Association, Chapter 370. This is Dora Hara Mayo. I hope I said that right. Hara Mayo.
Hara Mayo, yeah, close. Thank you so much. Good evening, President Begun and Board Superintendent Cabinet Members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Once again, my name is Dora Hara Mayo. I am the current president of the Oceanside California School Employees Association, CSCA, Chapter Number 370. Tonight, I'm here to give you a brief report from our classified community. CSCA E-Board members want to thank each and every one of our classified members for showing up, for the support and dedication you each demonstrate every day while placing your own health at risk for our students, our families, and by working together as a community to keep our schools running. You all have done an amazing job with the resources available and continue to make the best out of everything, making it work when the going gets rough. This first week back at school has been nothing less than crazy with the number of positive cases and close contact concerns well above what was experienced during 2021. We had schools with not enough classified or certificated staff on hand. Most of you have worked hard and continued to work long hours. Our district has been deploying various staff to support size as the need increases, yet we all continue to work hard. I know days can become long and hard, and sometimes it is appealing to think about leaving, but instead, you show up, you support, you emphasize, and you find a way. We appreciate the amount of courage and care it takes to put others first, but for those of our CSCA community who need it, our E-Board is here to support. CSCA E-Board understands that we are still in the midst of very hectic and confusing situation, and we look forward to continuing to work with our families and with the guidance of our district to ensure our staff, students, and community stay healthy as a whole. We are thankful that our parents continue to show compassion and understanding amidst this swelling pandemic chaos. Please remember how awesome you are, how grateful we are to have such incredible human beings working together as a community with our Oceanside Unified School District. We will get through this. We can do this as a team. Favorite quote of mine, "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success," by Henry Ford. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Dr. Begin.
Dora, is it, Dora, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Can you email me contact, your contact information?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you.
I would do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dora. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four, our general consent items. I believe we have public comment for this item.
Yes, we do. Patty Kaye, Emily Witchman, and Graham Frazier will be speaking on item 4G. Patty Kay, Emily Witchman, and Graham Frazier will be speaking on item 4G, ratification of warrant list.
So can, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, this definitely impacts the budget. And I would suggest strongly that you could save probably close to a million dollars if you would eliminate the money on the warrant list spent for Epic Education, as well as Panorama. This warrant list, it was ninety thousand. I think previously Panorama was ninety-two thousand. And these are simply measures of your efficiency of implementing diversity, education, equity, and inclusion. And also, if you were to eliminate that position, you would also save close to a half a million dollars. And all that money, nearly a million dollars, could be directed to assisting students learn. Okay? I have a radical idea, and that would be, why don't you reintroduce God into the curriculum? And then you could stop all this nonsense in. Excuse me?
Situation in a year and a half.
If you would reintroduce, introduce God into the curriculum, since you've taken it out, then you could stop all this nonsense about this diversity because God already teaches that. And you would save, in this instance, almost a million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next speaker is, I have Graham Frazier. Good evening, Graham.
Maybe Emily Witchman can go.
Okay.
Emily's not ready.
Sure, I can go. Can you hear me?
Yes, Emily. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm referring to purchase order, and this is in the ratification warrant list 4G, the purchase order 22994 Epic Education, Inc. I wanted information on this money-making, social-emotional learning corporation that we're spending ninety thousand dollars for an equity and audit of our students. On June 29th, I received a copy of the OUSD Equity and Cultural Proficiency Presentation, given to the board in June. On October the 2nd, board meeting, I asked to have a meeting with Dr. Sparks about the presentation. On the 29th, I met with Dr. Sparks at the time. I asked for a copy of the material presented to the board. On November 2nd, I asked again for the materials. On November 10th, I was directed by Dr. Sparks to submit a public records request in writing for the specific material. I did on November 18th, with the help from the Californians for Equal Rights Foundation, to your business services. On the 29th, I received a letter from your Human Resources Office with two and a half pages of legalese, ending with, "I would get the information requested on or about December 28th." Here it is, the January 18th, and nothing. I want to bring this up to the board to deter any legal actions against the district for its non-compliance for written requests for records from the OUSD pursuant to the California Public Acts Record. I contacted your lawyer, Peter Fagan, and told him how disappointed I was with the district's lack of transparency. Amid all the talk and the effort and time going into equity diversion and inclusion, it's apparently without the umbrella of transparency. I worked with Todd McAtier, Superintendent of Human Resources, and I have found him to be efficacious at all his dealings with the district. Could it be that two offices are involved and someone dropped the ball? Please let me know your next step, so I can prepare mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And our next speaker is Graham Frazier. Good evening, Graham.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. This is a very small item, actually, on item 4-0. I'm curious about the return on equity of the spending of five thousand five hundred to these two employees to go to the conference on the Impact Aid Item. What has been the track record of return on investment for people going to those conferences? And how much has the district benefited from going to those conferences? And what, what is, a lot of questions, what is the proportion of the budget? Has that helped the, has that helped the district's budget in the past very much? I'm just concerned about these relatively small, this may be a big item, but it may not be. I'm concerned about the way the staff is spending things on what I call inherently divisive concepts embedded in DEI efforts. There's taking away from funds from basic education, and why the district is in a deficit budget while failing to educate the kids, the primary mission of the district. So help me out with that if you can, or maybe have someone call me and understand that. That's all.
Thank you, Graham. All right, that, is that all we have, Ann, on?
Yeah. With Witchman, I think you might need to mute yourself.
All right, our, so general consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second.
I would just want to ask, do we want to address how important Impact Aid is, the federal Impact Aid, that it, that is a really important advocacy tool? Do we have somebody that can speak to that?
Yes, we attend the NAFIS Conference two times a year. We obtain about six million, six million dollars for Impact Aid. And those conferences that we attend are all about advocacy. And advocacy is all about being at the table and having our voice heard. And so we do attend those conferences. It's generally the Associate Superintendent of Business and the Director of Fiscal Services. I've also attended, and in the past, we've also had board members attend. We've been doing that for years and years. We're not the first ones under this administration to do that. So Oceanside is very involved in different levels of advocacy work at the state level and at the federal level. So, yes, we find it very beneficial to attend and advocate for those dollars. Does that answer your question, Eric?
Yeah, I would just say, from my understanding, it's a shame that these dollars are not allocated further in advance. That every year, we seem to have to go back and make sure that they are put into the budget. So, thank you for the advocacy on that. And I'm definitely looking forward to the results of our equity audit.
That's correct. And also, it's important that we go and advocate for the federal funds to modernize our schools that are on the base. Stuart Mesa's in the pipeline, you're going to hear a little bit about that later, and our advocacy matters. So that's why we attend. So thank you. And yes, we'll bring those results of the equity audit in June, and it's been a good process so far. And we look forward to our continued work with Epic Education.
May, may I add something to that? Prior to the current administration, current leadership, we were not getting those dollars. Somewhere along the line, prior superintendent, prior school board did not carry the ball, or there was no communication in terms of Oceanside Unified being able to receive those funds. And with Dr. Vitale, we're now able to obtain those monies. And it's, those dollars are very crucial dollars for the education of our students. Thank you.
I, I just, I have to say one thing about that, Eleanor. Previous administrations, there was actually a Director of Fiscal Services that served on the NAFIS Board and was very active to advocate for those Impact Aid dollars. So while we've been able to increase the amount, because it does depend on how many of the cards we collect and get back, the advocacy continues to be important, and our involvement of that continues to be important. But thank you for the shout out.
Yeah, but at the same time, we were told the dollars never came. It's one thing to advocate, it's another thing to actually receive those dollars, and those dollars were never received.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, um, with that, we have a first and a second. I can call for the vote. All in favor of approving general consent items? Say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? See none, motion carries five zero. Our next item on our agenda is a presentation on Measure W Project List Development. I'll turn this over to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. We're excited to be here tonight. We have Penny McGrew from CCMMOS, who's going to be giving a presentation. We're going to be looking at different scenarios for how we can optimize our Measure W dollars. And she'll also be introducing other funding sources to help our dollars go further. From here, from here, we'll be sharing these out this evening and let you know what we're already ready to get started on. And I'm going to go ahead and send it over to Penny, and she's ready to share.
Thank you, Dr. Norman. Good evening, esteemed Board Members, Superintendent Vitale, and Cabinet. We're super excited to be able to present to you tonight the work that has been going on behind the scenes since we last met in September. Knowing how important it is to provide a strong program for Measure W, we've been working diligently to prepare for tonight's meeting, where we'll be presenting a couple of project list scenarios for the upcoming Measure W Bond Program. We're grateful to our taxpayers for approving Measure W a little over a year ago, during a pandemic and during a major presidential election year. Tonight, we'll briefly review the timeline of what has occurred since then, what we heard through the master plan process, and steps we took to create several scenarios, and then walk through which, what each of those scenarios has to offer. Next slide, please. We'll start with the timeline. The voters approved Measure W in November of 2020. We immediately began the process of finding a master planning architectural firm through the request for qualification and interview process. We brought that to your approval in February of 2021, three months later, and during the holidays. As part of the master plan process, they would assess all district property and identify needs in a variety of ways. We asked the community for their input, and both the concept plan for each site and the cost associated were created. We brought that information back to the board at the September 2021 board meeting. The typical master plan usually takes about a year, but we were able to accomplish that in six months. In November of this year, the board approved moving forward with Reynolds and Surfside Modernizations. We're here tonight to present the potential project list for the balance of Measure W. Next slide, please. So what we learned during the master plan process. As a reminder, we had a committee of various district constituents. That was the core planning group. We held twenty-four meetings with that group basically once a week. We held forty-six community forums, both in English and Spanish. We held nine educational specification meetings, and our electronic survey was answered by eight hundred and three participants. From that data, the most common needs we heard were modernize existing classrooms, provide shade and outdoor learning environments, update playground equipment and surfaces, hardcourts and fields, and improve parking and drop off. This can all be seen by the master plan website. We use that information to create our basis of analysis for the scenario planning, to create potential project lists for your review. We looked at the various needs identified by the master plan, in not only facilities conditions, but educational adequacy and student need. The graph to the right clearly shows those by the color red. San Luis Rey and Jefferson Middle School were not considered, as they're being addressed under Prop H. We looked at when each series of the bond would be sold and what other potential funding sources might be available to the district. And we had to make some assumptions, like what had been previously done at the various sites. What projects might be done best as a district-wide project for savings of economy of scale? And we looked at solar options. Because of the updated energy code that went into effect this month, that requires all new school construction to have solar. And knowing that Reynolds was a new build, we did not factor solar into any other scenario, as we wanted to stretch those dollars as far as we could. Knowing that we did not have the eight hundred million dollars that the master plan would require, we looked at various condensed options within the master plan. Next slide. Once we understood that, we began to put the puzzle pieces together. We looked again at the timing of the various funding sources and put that information in our scheduling tool. Then we looked at what sites, sites rose to the top of the master plan, and if there was any potential funding associated with that site that would direct us to a specific point in time. Because we knew that we would not be able to do a full master plan on all sites, we looked at what we could accomplish at those sites that rose to the top of the analysis. Here again, we had to make some assumptions. Always, we consider scope, which is what we can do, schedule, and budget. And we knew that Reynolds and Surfside was already approved for moving forward, so those sites and their approved budgets will be in every option. A quick note about the bar, or if you could go back, yeah, thank you. A quick note about the bar graph to the right. This is our cash flow projections that we work through on every scenario. The orange line represents the funding sources, the green line represents the cumulative expenses, and the blue bars represent the projected expenditures for each quarter for the life of the program. The green line must always be below the orange line, or we run the risk of running out of money before the next wave of funds come in. It's okay for the blue bars to go higher than the lines, as it just represents the spending for that quarter. The beauty of the blue bars is that you can easily see when we're in the thick of construction and when we're in design. As part of this process, we look for what we call profs or valleys in the blue lines. If these are great, we want to look at realigning the project so that there's not a big lull in activity. For us, time is money, so we tighten those up as much as we can. This is a back and forth process to find the right balance between funding, timing, budgets, and the associated scope of work. In all cases, you'll see our green line gets close to our orange line in 2027. We projected the final bond sale to be in the fall of 2027, and this graph is telling us that we may need to move that up to the spring. Next slide, please. To, to complete the scenario planning effort, we went back to ensure that the cash flow worked for each scenario, that what we are presenting tonight is doable based on the information we have. For each scenario, we'll present the cash flow graph, a financial summary that shows the sites, their proposed budgets, and how the projects will be funded. We'll provide a high-level proposed timing of those projects in a color-coded way that's easy to understand. We'll show the projects that we have identified to be part of the funded plan. What would rise to the top if there were savings or additional funding becomes available, called planned pending. And then those sites that will likely not be touched as part of Measure W, except in some district-wide projects that we've identified. We also projected the following. PMO, which is the cost to run the program, assumes that the program will complete in nine years. We have a program reserve set at three percent. And once the program moves forward and the risk goes down and projects are complete, the reserve can be assigned to something else. This was assumed using mostly interest earned on the bond proceeds, and we based that amount on what is currently being earned under Prop H. We established a small program escalation of one point two percent of the program for unstable market conditions. Each project already has escalation built into it. But just knowing what we're facing under Prop H right now, and, and how unstable the market is with getting product, getting product delivered and labor shortages, we felt we needed that protection. Once the market settles down, and it eventually will, then we would reassign that budget. Finally, we'll provide you with the potential scope of work. I say potential because the master plan is a concept, and what the actual scope turns out to be will be determined during the design effort, based on not only need, but on budget as well. Each current summary is based on the options within the master plan. We understand, however, that ultimately, it is the board's decision on what is approved. So here we go. Next slide, please. This is scenario one, and the cash flow shows you that it works. As mentioned, you can see in 2027 that we are close to running out of funds based on the projected expenditures. So we would want to further the discussion on moving that final bond cell up a quarter or two. The graph shows you that we are finishing up projects and starting design all within that timeframe. Next slide, please. In this scenario, we assume that we will use Measure W with its interest earned and ester funds for a bond program of a hundred and seventy million. In this scenario, we assume that we will use Measure W with its interest earned and ester funds for a bond program of 170 million 725,000. By utilizing the ester funds in conjunction with the bond funds, it stretches out bond dollars and uses the ester funds for their intended purposes. You will see these funds on each scenario and they will be utilized the same for each. We'll use them for shade structures and HVAC replacements. We've identified two district wide projects, playground equipment and surface replacement and shade structures. We would replace the track and turf field at both high schools. Both have exceeded their warranty by years and are in ill repair. In addition to Reynolds and Surfside, we'll touch Stuart Mesa, Laurel, McCullough, King and Ivy Ranch. We have also set aside a small amount called startup projects for those one-off projects that tend to happen without notice. We want to be prepared to address those without affecting the budget of another site. Next slide, please. This shows the same information as a previous slide, but shows you how it falls within the timing of the bond series. The first color coded box shows us at a high level which projects will be done and approximately when. The projects that have gradient color tells us that there will be design and or partial construction under one series and completion under another. It really is all about cash flows to make sure that we can do what's planned. The second box that I mentioned earlier is the planned pending. We have identified South Ocean Side and Nichols as being next in line. To the right of the funding plan, it highlights what will be done under each series. Next slide, please. I've mentioned some assumptions several times during the presentation, and this just summarizes it up for you. This identifies funding sources. Reynolds and Surfside will move forward based on previous board approval. How we determine the particular sites, how we determine the cash flow that we added program escalation. And then also that all projects will require, will include required work for code compliance, utility and technology upgrades and site furnishings. So in this scenario, we propose that the scenario would allow us to complete those district wide projects, replace the high school track and turf on the fields, replace HVAC roofs and provide some site a utility upgrades at Stuart Mesa. And McCullough would provide a new kitchen MPR and outdoor lunch shelter. We would reconfigure the existing MPR to administration space. We would reconfigure the existing admin to kindergarten. We would modernize the kinder traditional classrooms and provide some site upgrades. At King Middle School, we would replace aging portables with the new classroom building and provide a small outdoor gathering space and new pedestrian pathways. At Ivy Ranch, we would provide a new kinder and classroom building, modernize the existing buildings, update the MPR library and provide some site upgrades. Next slide, please. This is scenario two. As you can see, the cash flow works. Again, in 2027, you can see the expenditures and funding line gets close, so we'd want to talk about that, but overall it works. Next slide. This program includes the Department of Defense grant for Stuart Mesa that the district is in line to receive. All other funding remains the same. This brings the total program to 195 million 725,000. We'll still do the playground and shade structure projects. This scenario shows that we'll do the playgrounds in phases. We did that to minimize disruption to complete over a couple of summers, and it worked with this particular cash flow. Aside from Reynolds and Surfside, we'll touch Laurel, Stuart Mesa, McCullough, Ivy Ranch and King. The timing of when each project will complete has changed as have the budgets, with the exception of the district wide projects, the high school track and field projects and Reynolds and Surfside. Something to keep in mind when looking at the changes in budgets is that we want as large a funding plan as possible, but it also means that our reserve for risk increases as does the program escalation. So we have to shuffle the budgets to get it to work. Next slide, please. This again shows the general timing of the projects. In the first series, we would complete the shade structures, playground, track and turf and Laurel. We will design and begin construction of Reynolds and Surfside. In the second series, we will complete Reynolds and Surfside. We will design and construct Stuart Mesa and design McCullough, Ivy Ranch and King. In the third series, we'll complete McCullough, Ivy Ranch and King. Should we have savings? We have Laurel first in line for additional work, then South Ocean Side and Nichols. The main difference between this scenario and the first, aside from the 25 million infusion of the DoD grant, is that Stuart Mesa gets a full renovation. Based on projected timing of the grant and the recalculation of reserve and escalation, it requires us to realign the other project budgets and timing. Next slide, please. The assumptions are the same with the exception that we added the Department of Defense grant. District wide project scopes remain the same as does the track and turf replacement at the high schools and Reynolds and Surfside. And then the potential scope for this scenario is listed to the right. Next slide, please. This is scenario three. And this one was the funnest for us to create. You can see that we made some assumptions on additional funding by the wiggly orange line and when we anticipate getting those. And you can also see very clearly in this cash flow when we're constructing and when we're designing. Next slide. In this scenario, we assumed all the funding in the previous plus state funding. Right now, the remaining 1.4 billion of state funding under Prop 51 will be exhausted in this upcoming fiscal year for already approved projects on the waiting list. However, we just learned that the governor's new budget proposes 1.3 billion as a one-time general fund allocation to school facilities funding for this fiscal year and a one-time general fund allocation of 925 million for the next fiscal year 2324. That's all great news for us as it shortens the waiting list. And the sooner we can get projects approved, designed and DSA approved, the sooner we can get on that list. Will it be enough for us to receive any of that one-time funding? No, but right now there's about $3 billion worth of projects on the list. And if we can eliminate 2.2 of that from that one-time funding, then that just puts us higher up on that list. And there's still talk about a 2022 state bond, but if that doesn't happen, then it will likely be on the 2024 ballot. This scenario is best case for a program of 221 million 520,000 dollars. We'll still do the district wide projects, the track and turf replacement and Reynolds and Surfside. We address needs at Laurel, Stuart Mesa, Ivy Ranch, King and McCullough. Next slide, please. The timing of this scenario is much like scenario two. The difference is that there are more funds, so more work gets done. In this scenario, our planned pending box, we have Laurel, South Ocean Side and Nichols. Next slide, please. The assumptions change by the added 25.8 million in state funding. Everything else remains the same. The district wide projects, Reynolds, Surfside and Stuart Mesa are the same as in scenario two. However, scope has changed at Laurel, Ivy Ranch, McCullough and King. More funding means more work at each site. As an example, at Ivy Ranch, this plan proposes everything we said in scenario two, but the MPR and library would receive a full-on modernization instead of upgrades. McCullough gets the new buildings and modernization of all buildings. And King gets the new classroom building and more attention to the outdoor learning areas. Next slide, please. So to summarize, there are three scenarios for consideration. They all have just right district wide playground equipment and surface upgrades where needed and metal shade structures. Because of the ill repair of the track and turf field at the high schools, the replacement of those are in all scenarios. Reynolds and Surfside are in all scenarios for the budget that was approved by the board in November. The other schools for consideration are Stuart Mesa, Laurel, McCullough, Ivy Ranch and King Middle, with varying budgets and potential work depending on the scenario and the expected funding. We have created a startup projects budget that can handle those one-off requests that meet bond expenditure requirements, but are not on this list. We've created a program reserve of 3% and a market escalation at the program level of 1.2%. All of those could be used at a later date to fund other projects, add to the existing projects budgets to further their scopes, or pull up from below the line another site. The program ranges from 170 million to 221 million depending on the scenarios. Next slide, please. This completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
When you talk about broadband.
Trustee Evans, can you repeat that, please?
Sure. The question was, when you talk about or discuss upgrades, are, are we including, are you including broadbands? What is an upgrade, basically? It seems very general.
Yeah, and so what we've, what we have identified is based on the master plan. So we do have technology upgrades in that, and that would be determined as part of the design process. But that kind of fits both within utilities and technology.
And the second is, I'm noticing, and I know Mike has told me, but seemingly we seem to be spending money on the same thing over and over. The track field. And certain schools with each bond seem to receive funds, whereas other schools, they're not mentioned at all, more specifically McCullough. We've, we've invested a lot of money into that school. Is it was, was it poorly planned? It was poorly built. What is the rationale? I remember my, when it was built, and I think that school has received a lot of funding, a lot of attention compared to some of the other schools.
So McCullough specifically to the master plan. And I don't have it in front of me, but when we looked at, at the facilities condition needs, that school in the, in the previous bonds only got small amounts like playground upgrades. I think they might've got some portables, but they didn't get any full modernizations or any, any major upgrading to that site. And so that one was one of the ones besides SLR, San Luis Rey and Jefferson, that was one of the ones that had the highest need.
I disagree, but okay.
Thank you.
I want to remind the board that the recommendations that Penny put together are all based on the long range facility master plan. So these aren't projects that she specifically picked for one reason or another, other than the long range facility master plan demonstrated the most need at these schools. But this is a presentation of three different scenarios, but based on the long range facility master plan, where we thought we could get the most for our dollars. You're not making any decisions tonight. We're not even looking for direction. We wanted to give you this first opportunity to ask questions like the one you just asked Eleanor, or other questions, or other thoughts, or other concerns. This is completely based off the long range facility master plan needs. But you might have other thoughts or personal ideas, and that's why we're here to answer those questions like, how much did McCullough get? What was actually done there? So feel free to ask those questions, and if we don't know the answers off the top of our heads, I will research them and get back them, get them back to you at a future board meeting when we talk about this bond money again.
I have a question. Is it possible to make this like a workshop? Only because it seems like we're gonna, there's a lot of questions. I have a lot of questions, especially because we're going over three different scenarios. And it seems that there's some stuff that is already pulled off automatically and we weren't even able to discuss. It's like when we look at the solar part of it. I mean, I just, it's automatically pulled out and we weren't even able to discuss that as, as being an option or being left in and why and why not? Why and why not? So is it something that we can do as a workshop presentation and be able to ask those questions? And to be able to go through and even ask additional questions and to have that presented at that time?
Stacy, that's up to you and the Board of Education. If you want to have an additional meeting where we'll present the same exact information. We have time now, Raquel. We're, we're not in any hurry. But if you want more time to look through the presentation and think about other questions, could we schedule another workshop? If that's the desire of the majority of the Board of Education, we're happy to do that. It's not a problem for us at all.
So could I weigh in on that too? Raquel, I didn't want to interrupt you. I can't see you because the question's things up. Okay, you're muted. Sorry. I would absolutely support a workshop on this because while it's based on a lot of the work. First of all, thank you, Penny. There's a ton of work. It's really cool to see the, the money that we're going to be able to spend on our children. I'm so excited about it. The project list does take assumptions from the get information that was gathered. So I do think there are some areas where we, we might want to be rethinking this project list. When you look at the top, in anticipation of this meeting, I went back and looked at our, our survey that had eight hundred or so responses. The top, the top responses are to repair current environments, to make modern, provide flexible labs for science, art maker spaces, shade structures. It's in there, top three. So I'm glad that we're addressing, you know, that one. Making libraries more technologically centered, outdoor based learning, improve campus security, fix restrooms and outdoor learning spaces. So that's the top seven. I'm really concerned that we haven't included a plan to make Wi-Fi ubiquitous across all of our campus spaces because I know that's a big piece of the flexible outdoor learning and the future of what our one-to-one environment looks like in our school district. I think that would be a really important piece for us to be looking at. And I think a workshop would provide us some information on whether or not that's a reasonable thing to go forward. But another, another idea, another piece of, of what the bond can really serve is creating Wi-Fi cafes for students to access seven days a week near the school sites, especially in our underserved communities. I know equity is a big part of our decision-making process. But when it, like technology upgrades, that's something that could absolutely be integrated into what we're doing here, and that is a heavy equity lift. The Jefferson gym and multipurpose room, I know we said Jefferson is on our previous bond. But in the original presentations that we received on Jefferson, the gym multipurpose room wasn't included. And so I'm concerned, I, I don't know the present status of that, but I'm concerned if that's not included, then we may have to allocate some of Measure W to finish with Jefferson, and I know that's not part of this project list. And I too am concerned that we didn't get the full information about the solar. I understand that the decision was made. But we are the ones that are supposed to make that based on the information that comes forward. So I would really like comprehensive information about how other districts are making solar work for them. And I, and I recognize it's going to take some more patience from us in some areas, but I think it's really important that we get that in place. So I would love a workshop to work through some of this because I do have a ton of questions as well.
Yeah.
Eleanor, what do you think?
I'm in agreement that we need more information. I would like to see a workshop, you know, organized in terms of. And I'm focusing on the seems to be a favorite school policy as well as the fact that we do need Wi-Fi and broadband. And it sort of ties in with some of the other things we talked about earlier regarding schools without walls. I'll just call it that at this point in time. I would like to thank Penny for the hard work she did and for the presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Evans, so just going off of what you said. In preparation for the workshop, you'd like to make sure that we have a, a clear understanding of what schools have had, what work done throughout the years. That way we have all that background information, correct?
Correct. And some schools seemingly are, have received very little. And I think a classic example is Reynolds, and I could name some others, but I won't.
And, and we are going to continue.
Go ahead.
I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I have a lag, obviously. I'm sorry. We'll still continue down the Reynolds path. That's already been started as the Surfside has as well. And we'd like to get going on the shade structures too, because those are going to take additional time with DSA. So we'd like to make those suggestions moving forward from this meeting and then still plan on having a workshop.
Excellent. Thank you.
So it sounds like Julie, and I haven't heard from Mike, but it sounds like a majority of us would like a workshop to dig deeper into this topic. Mike, how are you? Mike, how are you feeling?
I hear a majority talking that way, so I'm, I'm not gonna, that. I, I think this was a great piece of work. I appreciate it. I appreciated the three scenarios, basically of the three different fundings, the Prop W and then state money and then, you know, federal money or vice versa, federal money, if we get money for Stuart Mesa in that second scenario, and then third scenario with the state bond money to help guide our decision-making, but we, we, this was a good effort and it's consistent with that long-range plan. So there's some things we need to rough polish around the edges there for some direction, and then let's do that. But the big picture here is keeping our facilities in good shape and, you know, rebuilding the ones like Reynolds that needed it, and looks like McCullough is gonna get up into that realm, too, perhaps, from what the discussion is as well. But you know, I think the things that appear that have been neglected over time, when you guys do that research and you see how much we've thrown into Laurel, how much into Libby over the time or Del Rio, we've, we've done a lot in those other schools. So this is kind of the stuff that's left. But anyway, appreciate the work, staff.
Great. So they will be scheduling that workshop then. So stay tuned.
Thank you. And Stacy, I just want to say, so this is really helpful, actually, giving us the information that you'd like us to research now, so we can come to that workshop with the information. So if you have any other ideas right now, we'll certainly take those down. If you have any future other ideas that come to you later, please let me know. So we're going to bring you information on ubiquitous Wi-Fi. Follow up, follow up on solar. I heard information about the Jefferson multipurpose room and/or gymnasium, and give you sort of a history of what's been done already with previous bond. That information is actually on our website, what was, what was done with the Prop H and the, actually the bond before that. So we're happy to bring that to you. Other thoughts that are in your mind right now, we're happy to take those, and then Stacy, I'll work with you to schedule the workshop. So anything else you can give us right now would be great. Or before
I'm, I'm
prepared.
What, just one thought on the, on the base school work, I, I would, I would like us to stay focused on trying to get federal money for the base school improvements as, at least out of the chute, rather than committing Prop W money out of the chute as, as, as a preference. I don't know. That's too nuanced for, for tonight, but in that, in that, in that quest to, to do Stuart Mesa, I would like to, you know, push the full, full front at the federal level to fund that rebuild or whatever work we need to do there as a first, first effort.
I'm in agreement. Trustee Blessing, the one, the one thing we have to look at with Stuart Mesa is the HVAC right now. That's just about all but done. So that might be one area where we'll have to focus on that, and we can leverage ESSER dollars for that. But I hear what you're saying in terms of making it a priority to get federal funding. The other thing that I can bring to the meeting and work with Penny on is timelines for when things age out. For example, we've mentioned the track and the turf. We can bring you when we purchased, when the warranty's up, and what our average lifetimes are. And those are for all different things. We can talk about when HVAC usually has an end of life, when walls have an end of life, electrical, so we can share with you these things so that you understand. Sometimes, I know as a homeowner, I hate to put money into things I can't see, but it's really important if you want to keep your house functioning, and the same is with schools. And so we want to make sure you have the information for how long different things last, because some things can last 40 years and some things can last 25.
And of this plan, we want you to know, the only thing that we feel that's in stone, because that's the direction and the decision from the board, is Reynolds and Surfside. That's the only, those are the only projects that we feel are in stone, and that's based on previous board decision and direction. The other item that we know is a high priority and high interest from our sites is those shade structures. And so, you know, we would like to move forward with the shade structures. And there was questions about solar being placed on those, and Penny did do research on that and learned that the amount of solar that could be placed on that would not be beneficial to the district. We can certainly delay that decision, or we can move forward with those shade structures. In previous conversations where the board landed, I remember it was like the fabric shade structures, the shade structures that were metal, and then the ones with metal and solar, the ones that you had the most interest in was metal for sure, and then potentially metal with solar, but it would not be enough solar panels to generate any kind of cost benefit to the district. So we can move forward on those, or we can wait. Everything else, we do not feel that we have marching orders, orders for at all, and we know is up to complete for discussion and decision. So unless you want to make any correction on that, Stacy, that's where we feel our only marching orders are.
And so are you saying that you have clarity from us or comfort from us to move forward with the metal stage structures? Because I want us to move that forward.
We would love to move that forward, but I don't know that we have clarity on that.
Is that at every school type, too, right?
Yeah.
Is that every, is that every eating area? Is that every playground area? I mean, what are we talking about?
There are specific areas that have been identified with the school site administration. We've walked all of the sites. Depending on how much funding we were to allocate for it, it could be at least one, it could be multiple. But we have at least one site already identified. We put a pause on it when we got the feedback to not go forward with fabric, but rather with metal, and then we waited and we investigated the solar options. So right now, what we've done is we've looked at at least one metal shade structure at each site.
Forgive me, but I was under the impression that we hadn't made a decision regarding metal for the shade structures for all schools.
Correct. Yes, you are correct. And because we went with metal, and we didn't have enough ESSER funding allocated, so we, we would leverage it with bond funding to get the project completed with metal.
If we're not doing solar, I prefer to do, to do fabric.
It won't last, though. We'll be doing fabric every other year between the weather and vandalism.
Yep, it's like 10 years, right? I, I mean, this school teacher has fabric. It's, it works very well. I don't know how, what's the year of the life range on the fabric, sorry.
Yeah, we don't have that in the room. We're all making educated guesses, but our educated guesses weren't close to each other, so we'd need to bring that back. But, you know, looking at the schedule, we're likely to have this workshop. My hope would be in February. And so we can get the lifespan of that and delaying, you know, shade structures by a couple of weeks. Sorry, all the schools who really need shade. I know the hot season's coming up. The delay won't hurt that much, because I, I would anticipate we'll schedule the workshop for February. So we'll get that information on the lifespan of a fabric.
And just realize that with metals, it's going to be year-round protection. I'm sorry, Raquel. Go ahead.
I think that the, the most important thing is that doing it right the first time, because we, again, we're, the past is, we, we just do things, and we just do it and we go in circles. So if we're gonna do it, you know, it's just the, the process of this whole thing is that, that we're gonna just focus on doing it the right way, because, you know, and, and we do apologize that, you know, we're not gonna have them up, and the hot season is coming over, but what about the school sites that didn't have anything while it was raining? You know, and those are the things that we're worried about, too. You know, those kids that were sitting out in the rain and having to eat lunch and get under a, you know, an awning somewhere, because that's all that there is at those school sites. So, you know, we, we, the focus is to just get it done right, again, using the best funding that we possibly can to get it done, and making it happen the best way and the, the most efficient way. That's ultimately the, the goal, I think, for this whole board.
Well, I'm, I'm excited about this workshop.
Julie, do you have an effort, direction?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll wait for our workshop in February.
I love all the data. Thank you.
Dr. Vitale, I forgot. You had, you did ask one more, you asked for ideas, and since we're just in it before we walk away, I'll
That'd be great.
Over half of the respondents asked for flexible labs for specialized programs, science, music, art, maker labs. If, if we could do one of those at each site, that really is a space for advanced learning, that could be another way we touch each site, and we really actually touch each site in an academic, specific way, whereas some of the other plans hit them with, with shade, which is great, but not necessarily for the learn.
Great. And again, if there are any other thoughts, please share those with me, and we'll bring whatever information we can to the workshop that we're going to schedule likely for February, but I'll work with Stacy on that. All right. Thank you so much.
Right. Thanks. Good conversation. Exciting stuff coming up. I'm going to move on to personnel. Item six. Item six A is the approval of the MOU between the Oceanside Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, and it's chapter 370. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. On January 1st, 2022, the California minimum wage increased to $15 per hour for employers with 26 or more employees. This memorandum of understanding is intended for duty supervisors at certain ranges on the classified salary schedule to ensure compliance with the California minimum wage.
Thanks for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item six A, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries five zero. Moving on to item six B, the revised classified salary schedule to comply with the California State Minimum Wage Increase.
Connected with the previous MOU, this is the effective change for the salary schedule for classified hours. Ranges eight and nine will be removed from the classified salary schedule.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any questions for Dr. McAtter? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item six B, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries five zero. Moving on to item six C. This is a ratification of the memorandum of understanding between Oceanside Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, and it's chapter 370. This is the same one again? Nope. Some more. Go ahead.
This is a separate MOU. It's a safety MOU, the need to address the continuance of the COVID-19 pandemic and its effect on employee safety and the workload led CSCA and OUSD negotiation teams to develop and reach a memorandum of understanding on December 17th, 2021, which has been ratified by CSCA membership. This MOU calls for approval of additional extra pay for work-related COVID-19. Also leave time for eligible workers and testing requirements and CDPH safety guidelines.
Thanks for the description. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Just a second. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item six C. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item six D, the revised class specification, director of maintenance and operations.
Thank you. With a recent resignation of the project manager, maintenance, operations, and facilities, it was determined that the structure of the department needed to be updated. Previously, the Department of Maintenance, Operations, and Facilities handled all aspects of district facilities. With a bond program and modernization happening, it was determined to be the best interest of the district to split the position and to, and to have a director of maintenance and operations and a director of facilities. The revised class specification for director of maintenance and operations is being presented now for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a question. Can you're gonna have a director of maintenance and operation, then a director of facilities?
That's right. That is typical, and most in many districts, is to split the two. The type of work is very different. And in the, in the presentation that you just saw, the work involved with the bond construction management requires a lot of time and commitment, and one of these positions would help oversee those projects that would be going on in the district.
Okay, so the director of facilities would be involved in construction, and the director of maintenance would basically involve making sure that what's the building is there, that it is maintained.
That's right. One is to, to oversee our current existing facilities and make sure they're, continue to receive the services they need, and the other one is to work on our plans and projects for building and modernizing new facilities.
Would director facilities require some sort of background in architect or degree in architecture or?
That's my next item. So this, this one is just the revision of the Director of Maintenance and Operations, and then I'm going to be bringing the next one, which is the facilities job description.
Thank you.
Look at you, Eleanor, jumping ahead. Way to go. All right, so I made a motion to approve. I didn't I have I got a second. All right, thanks, Mike. First and a second. Do we have any more questions for Dr. McAtter? On this one? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item six C, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now Todd can talk about item six E, the new class specification for a director of facilities.
Right, and so whereas the other one was a revised job description, this is the new job description that would be included with board approval for the director of facilities and to help with the workflow and management of district facility programs. The key important responsibilities of this new position are to provide program direction and leadership in the overall planning, financing, and construction process of a major multi-year district-wide program of facility construction and renovation. The court, the coordination and preparation and maintenance of the district's comprehensive master plan, including completion required demographic, facility, and educational data, and finally, conduct studies and perform an analysis of factors to aid in long-range facilities planning, analysis of the condition and utilization of existing facilities, housing, and construction trends.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, you've
Sorry. When would we be able to fly this position?
Once we have board approval, we'll go ahead and work with our classified HR department to get this posted and flown. We'd like to get it filled as soon as possible.
Tomorrow, Raquel. I'm gonna decipher what he just said tomorrow.
Thank you.
There's the boss.
Does the, does the hiring of somebody internal like this reduce our reliance on external groups at all?
Sorry, Mr. Joyce, are you asking if the position's filled with a outside candidate, or what was the question?
I just mean, this is hiring somebody in, into our district, right? And do we currently have people that are doing this work outside of the district? Outside companies?
A lot of the work has been fallen on Dr. Norman, so I'm sure she'll be happy to have this position filled that was not done. And remember, we're not filling the, the previous position that was vacated, so that will help fund for this position in terms of financing. It is, it's going to be a busy position. It's something that we will post. Applicants can apply that are currently OUSD, but it'll be flown as a position outside to make sure we get the broadest applicants and best qualified person.
Okay.
Eric, I'm doing Todd interpreting tonight, and the answer to that question is no. Sorry, Todd. Feeling feeling like I do, too. They're very professional.
Today.
He's doing great. He's doing great.
All right, so I made a motion to approve. I'm not sure if I heard a second.
I'll second.
Second.
Yeah, I'm excited. With all this bond work coming down, we do need someone that can really focus on this work, so. All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item six E, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, pushing carries five zero. All right, Todd's off the hook, I think. So we're moving
Be back later.
Oh. Moving on to our next seven business. We have seven A. This is adoption of resolution number 23 for the 2122 school year. This is approving and adopting the adjusted trustee area plan following the release of the 2020 census data, and we've seen this before, so I'll turn this over to staff.
That's correct. Dr. Begin, you have seen this before. On December 14th, you received a presentation, and we also had a public hearing where we received no comments. And this information has been on our website since early December, and Susan Miller is going to be here to just walk through the presentation one more time. I know that you've seen this and you have studied it, and tonight we will be asking you to make a decision on which map that you would like to adopt. So with that, Susan, I turn it over. on which map that you would like to adopt. So with that, Susan, I turn it over to you.
Great. Good evening. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year. It's great to see you all again. I think you all have had this on your board docs for a little, for at least a few days anyway. And so this is kind of a repeat of our December eight-fourteenth conversation. And so if we can just go through the presentation relatively quickly, you all know that this was the Colorado Voting Rights Act took place or took into effect on January first, two thousand and three. It prohibits the use of that large elections when such an election system, quote-unquote, impairs the ability of protected class to elect candidates of its choice or its ability to influence the outcome of an election. What is it meant by trustee area? Only safe harbor from a CVRA claim. School district is divided into trustee areas, which you all are. The governing board member is elected from each trustee area, which you all are as of now. And the board members are elected by only the registered voters in the particular trustee area. So you're in alignment with this at this time. The creation of those maps back at the time when the trustee areas were established was equal population, meaning you wanted to have a relatively equal number of voting population in each of the trustee areas that the minority rights were honored, no discriminatory purpose, and no vote dilution. And equal protection, meaning that race must not be the predominant factor. State requirements also took into consideration topography, geography, such as like mountains and lakes and rivers. Can you be thoughtful about when you do these trustee areas that you take those components into consideration? As well as looking at community of interest, that you try to keep a community that has been together for a while as a consideration when you looked at the trustee compositions. So this is where you are all right now. This is how it's structured at this time. Trustee area one is designated the yellow, trustee area two, green, the peach color is area number three, trustee area four is blue, and trustee area number five is the pink color, so to speak. When we looked at where you all were, oh, that's fine, let's go, go ahead. What we are called to do is at the time of the census, when, once that trustee areas were made, when the census comes forward, we just want to be tweaking the trustee areas. We don't want to be redesigning. We want to be able to say that we have already set those trustee areas in place. Now what we want to be able to do is kind of a rebalancing. So the governing board must approve what we call the adjustment of the trustee areas' boundaries to make sure each population in the trustee area is nearly as equal as practical. And that has to be done by March first of two thousand and twenty-two. So right now, when we talked with you guys a couple months back, back in November, we raised forth the variance that you guys are right now, which is twenty-one point nine percent. And that's the difference between the population of the largest trustee area in comparison to that of the lower trustee area, divided by really what your ideal size needed to be. And that's where you're coming up with your variance. And so as we talked about this back in November, on the thirtieth, the variance is twenty-one point nine percent. And ideally, we want to get to ten percent or lower in terms of variance under the guidance for the Colorado Voting Act. So what we are talking about is the maps that we presented to you all last time in December fourteenth. And we can move forward with the next slide, please. The changes that need to be made, as I said, we're not in compliance, we're no longer in balance. So what we're going to ask of you this evening is to choose the map that best suits your board in terms of what we want to do is bringing the variance down under ten percent and honoring the voters within each of your trustee areas. And once you select that, you will adopt a resolution that authorizes the staff to submit a new map and the district decision-making process to the county committee on the reorganization, the register for use in the future. So what we talked about before in scenario one was just the movement of parts of different census blocks. That's what we do is we're not trying to move entire neighborhoods, et cetera. We're trying to be thoughtful about just moving, tweaking, so to speak. And in this case, if we go to the next page, you can see where we're trying to adjust accordingly, balancing out the population and following the roads. Once again, as I said before, what type of geographic boundaries could we take into consideration? If you look at the red arrows, it suggests the changes that are being made, and the black arrows show the changes due to merge census blocks. So we're putting census blocks together. Areas of the district not shown on this map do not have proposed changes. So the bigger map that I showed you before, we're really zoning in on the parts that we're looking to tweak, shall we say, as we did last month. In this case, we have a two-point-seven variance. And if you notice, the maximum, shall we say, of population in one trustee area is the twenty-seven thousand three eighty-four in trustee area number two with a low of twenty-seven thousand seventy-five in trustee area five. So your variance is very low between those two. If we go to the second scenario, please. Once again, this is the zoomed-out picture of your trustee areas on the second page, page twelve. You'll see that once again, we're zooming in on those areas that we're adjusting, and we're looking to once again follow the growth and following the roads in your district areas. The red arrows show the proposed changes to the trustee areas. Peach is moving a little bit into the yellow area, trustee number three, the trustee area number one. And the black arrows show the changes due to the merged census blocks where the blocks have been combined. Notice that the district not shown on this map does not have any of the boundaries changed. Once again, we're not looking at the bigger one. We're just focusing in on the adjustments that are being made. In this case, the variance, we'll go to the next page, please, is eight-point-seven. So just a little bit below the ten percent level that we have discussed as that's kind of our ceiling, where we need to be. We need to be under ten percent. Once again, in this case, you have the high population in area trustee number one of twenty-eight thousand three twenty-six with the low in trustee area number three of twenty-five nine, nine, excuse me, nine fifty-nine. Moving on to scenario number three, once again, this is the zoomed-out picture. We'll focus in now on what's changed. This one takes into consideration the balancing of the population growth as well as following the designated roads. And we showed the changes to the trustee areas with the red arrows and the black arrows show the changes due to the merged census blocks. In this case, the variance is going to be two-point-five percent with the range from the high twenty-seven three seventy, oh, I'm sorry, twenty-seven eight oh five, my apologies, in trustee area number four to the low of the twenty-seven one seventeen in trustee area number one. On the next slide, we have the different scenarios, so you can see, compare, and contrast. Those are the zoomed-out maps, so you can see your entire district. And then on the next page, page eighteen, those are the ones that are zooming in to show you the changes with the different trustee areas. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or I know you have looked at these now for over a month and something. So anything that I can do to be helpful in your conversation, please let me know.
Well, I have one question. I know it seems really silly because I'm in trustee area three. Why is the whole part of the ocean, why does that go into the ocean? I'm just curious. The pink?
I think that's just really the way they've structured the map in the shape file. It's not saying that you're out in the middle of the ocean. It's just the shape file that we grab for the work that we do.
Okay, I was just checking. I was like, all right.
Dr. Begin represents all of our Mer students.
That's exactly right. All those mermaids and Mer students out there, you're responsible for.
All the people in the harbor. I don't know. Okay, cool. Thank you.
That was my comment. I still need clarification in terms of the definition of community of interest when on the map you're listing people in terms of their ethnicity, skin color, race. I I just need clarification. What is the community of interest?
Community of interest could be something like, I think the one that we have been using for people to understand is if you were to take, for example,
Talking about class structure or what?
No, no. Or social structure. So for example, the Mennonites in a specific area of Ohio, you know, they're in a community, they have a certain lifestyle that they have, a community of businesses, et cetera. You're not necessarily going to want to break up the Mennonites in a, what you would equate to a community of interest. That's how we have defined that in the explanation. So it's not specifically sitting back and saying it's all by race or it's all by, because we don't even have socioeconomic numbers out yet from the census area right now. We don't have that information for us to be doing that work.
Hold on, the census.
We know when that
Go ahead, finish. Go ahead.
Do we know when that information's going to come out?
I'm not sure of the date, but I do believe it is after our March first, two thousand and twenty-two. It just takes a little bit more time for the census to get us that information. So we don't have that. Nobody has that right now. And that's been raised by other districts as well, is, you know, what else are you taking into consideration? But we're not taking that into consideration. All we're looking at trying to do is balance out the populations that are served by the different trustees, being thoughtful about not breaking up census blocks. We're trying to keep census blocks together and doing that work, and then talking about the variance levels of what you all seek. You know, is it just to kind of meet the standard of just below the ten percent? Or we're also trying to provide a different range, and we were asked to go to a lower level, and that's what we provided as well.
The I like so enough. Excuse me. I don't have the floor. Who's got the floor? I can't hear anybody.
It's all you, Mike. It's all you.
It's Mike.
Okay, yeah, it's going in and out a little bit for me here. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. If I'm not hearing right or I break in wrong. I've looked at these, and they're all kind of edge issues here, but scenarios one and two are virtually identical in terms of what they're changing. They're moving, in a substance, anyway, they're moving Oceana effectively into District One in both those scenarios. And I don't think that's necessarily a solid community of interest issue, but we don't need to debate it in that sense. I think scenario three makes the most sense. If you look at it in terms of the area of green that would go into Evelyn's district, which is where McAuliffe is, and all those single-family homes down there around the college streets, Cameo and that. Those who've been up in my district this past, you know, couple of years, and they really do more relate to your area and the Delaware Hills area and Henny Hills, you know, south of Oceanside Boulevard as a residential area. So that's where I think the line of making it consistent along Oceanside Boulevard there for District Five or the pink district is the most elegant solution, and it solves the problem, and it got it to what, I think, what, two percent or something over all of the
Two point five.
Yeah, which is just, that's right on the money, I mean, as close as you can get. So I move that we adopt scenario three and adopt a resolution, directing staff to submit scenario three.
I'll accept. I second that motion.
All right. Let me look. Sorry. If you permit me just a second.
Well, just in terms of mobility around the district, it makes it so much easier.
Yeah.
Does that put Oceanside High School into District Five?
Well, we'll all be responsible for Oceanside High School.
Well, I'm just saying that little, little area right there.
We take care of all schools.
Doesn't it matter?
Not like we're any particular schools.
Yeah.
There's no voters there on campus.
No, but there's a neighborhood that's adjacent that's
Oh, yeah. No, I, yeah, you're right. You're right.
I'm just trying to look at the map.
It looks like it goes up Mission, all the way up Mission is the boundary between three and
It's really hard to see on that map. Okay.
But it doesn't go all the way to the five.
No, okay, so it would still, Oceanside High would still remain in District One, but then across the street would be District Five. Okay.
Three, yeah.
Sorry, three. I keep saying five. Okay, I I think scenario three is probably closest. It's just there's a lot. There's three different districts that come together down there by the by the ocean. That's the only one that looks the most crammed in, that you're carving up those three different areas.
But they were carved up before, just in a slightly different area in the existing maps. I mean, you know, so it's kind of like a reality that they've run into. You know what I'm saying, Eric?
Oh, yeah. I guess District One just had this strand, and District Three just had this strand previously, huh?
Yeah, yeah, so it was kind of squashed and really no meaning, no meaningful population down there much. It's about where Stacy's house is, go north, right?
It's two big hotels. That's all I can tell you.
Right. Okay. Yeah, of the three, I think number three looks the most contiguous as far as communities go, in my opinion.
I'll entertain a motion.
I moved it already. I think I had a second.
We have a motion and a second.
All right, good. We have a first and a second.
Call for the vote.
On scenario three? All right, so all in favor, adopting resolution number twenty-three with scenario three, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries five oh. I was expecting a little more. All right, we're going to move on to our next item. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
All right, our next item is item seven B, approval of purchase and installation of district-wide elementary classroom furniture.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. I'm excited to bring this to you tonight. The Elementary Furniture Committee or Work Group has been meeting since May of two thousand and twenty-one. It's made up of six general ed teachers, two special education teachers, two paraprofessionals, and we also had site and district administrators participate. In July, we purchased pilot classes. They have been installed from October to December, our last one just before the break. After successful pilots, the Work Group has selected modern, flexible furniture for K-five general education and special education classes throughout the district. We anticipate receiving the furniture in the spring, storing it off-site, and installing during the summer months. Communications regarding the process will be sent via the Wednesday Weekly beginning tomorrow. I have something ready to go. I will continue to send out regular communications regarding the specific items that were selected, designs for the different grade levels, and the process for removal and installation, et cetera, after we place the final order in January. So it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of the new elementary furniture.
What happens to the old furniture? And secondly, do we have pictures of the new furniture?
We do. The old furniture, we go through a very specific process. In fact, we had a meeting with Sarah Polito from F3 just to make sure we were going to be bringing everything to the board. You'll be seeing that coming starting in March. We have a process we need to go through in terms of how we dispose of the furniture. First, we have to put it up to auction, and then after an auction, we can do a private sale. After we attempt a private sale, we can give it to a charitable organization, and then only after that can we dispose of it. And so there's four steps you go through before it does get disposed. And we are looking to have Demco both install, that's the company we went with, and remove so that we don't put the burden on any particular work families in our organization. So we've thought all that out, and that will be coming to the board in March when we talk to you about our plan for removal.
And pictures will be shared at a later time. Dr. Norman is putting a presentation together to share with staff if this item is approved. And in that presentation, there will be pictures of the furniture, so when we have that, we will share that with the board.
Thank you.
Does this mean that everyone on fifth-grade level will get the same furniture across the fifth grade? So there, I assume there's like secondary. Okay.
Right, so we've done it by different levels. We've done mild mod and moderate severe classrooms. We've designed kindergarten, we've designed primary, and then fourth and fifth. So we have a few different models. Very similar, and just in case, um, for example, we need to um lower class size, move furniture from campus to campus, but they will be the same.
Can you give us some description of what it is? Or, or is the flexible seating? Or is it like rocking chairs? Is it stools? Sorry, as a, on the ground, I just.
All of the above. Yeah, it's very exciting. All of the above. We have um student desks, student chairs, and then we have flexible seating options that the teachers have tried out. We've tried out uh many different kinds in all of our different levels. And then we have um teacher workstations, teacher teaching tables, teacher chairs. Um, and so those, and then we also have bookcases that are on wheels also. And I got a really great um email from one of the teachers on, that had a pilot class, and uh when she came back, she said, um, she had her kids together before break. When she came back, she said it took about one minute to spread all her kids out, which was um one of the goals that we wanted is to make sure that the seating could easily be moved around, and that includes your bookcases, because that helps design different elements in your classroom also. So everything can be moved.
Now, I'm just being able to pick, like, you know, because there's, some students prefer certain um types of or certain students do better with certain type of furniture. Will the teacher be able to decide what they want in their classroom based upon what they have going in?
Uh, we have a standard that we've set for all of the classrooms, and so um I think that there'll be enough variety for the teachers, but with the scale of our project, it was impossible to um individualize it for each teacher. So we thought through each design with the committee and walked through the presentations many times and looked at all the different furniture options. So it's not tailored to each individual teacher, but we have tailored it to the different grade level designs.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Did you have a question, trustee?
No, it's okay. Um, a second, but then I'm, I'm just gonna say, um, I'm gonna be voting yes this one because of the funding source, not because of the topic itself. I'm really excited. I think it's really important. Um, I think in my perfect world, we would do this over the course of the next several years, and we'd, we'd pay for it from a different source, but I think the S R COVID funds um are needed in other areas. So for that reason, I'll be voting uh no tonight.
Did you just second it, though?
Yeah.
All right.
He did.
All right.
That's all right.
I find it a good use of one-time money, so like to buy furniture. And I've talked to two of the teachers that were part of the pilot as well as the association president about the process and making sure everybody, you know, understands the new furniture and how it works. So I'm happy to hear, Dr. Norman, there's a process to um transition the old furniture, and there's a process for that. And then I'm happy to hear that you have a process for the teachers to go through in order to use it. Because I'm sure some teachers who weren't part of the pilot would clearly want to see how it was used or maybe look at other people's classrooms. So I'm happy to see you're working with the association on that.
Absolutely.
Right. Any more questions? All right, I will call for the vote. All in favor of approving item seven B, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is that you, Eric? I didn't hear you.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so motion carries four one. And thanks, Eric, for explaining your position. I appreciate it. All right, next item has a public comment. Next item is seven C, the approval of resolution number twenty-two for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year approving the sale of property, garrison, and making related findings. So we're going to do the staff presentation, and then we'll see if we have any questions, and then we'll listen to public comment before we make any decisions.
Thank you, President Begin. The district owns approximately eleven acres of real property at the Garrison site, which has been declared surplus property by the Seven-Eleven Committee. The district offered the property for sale and received an offer from the city of Oceanside. Um, the board then instructed staff to negotiate the terms of a purchase and sale agreement with the city. During the negotiations, the city informed us that they sought to purchase approximately three of the acres for purposes of installing a new lift station and did not desire to purchase the remaining portion of the property. The district is in negotiations with a third-party purchaser to purchase the remaining portion of the property. In order to facilitate the development of the property, the city and the third party will enter into a cooperative agreement. The district desires to enter into the negotiated purchase and sale agreement whereby the city will purchase the property, the three acres for three point three million dollars under certain terms and conditions. This resolution approves the sale of the property pursuant to the PSA and authorizes staff to move forward with the execution of the PSA and sale of property pursuant to this um to the terms and determines that the sale is exempt from CEQA and authorizes staff to file a notice of exemption.
Any questions for Dr. Norman? All right. Let's call up our public comments. I believe we have.
Mr. Graham Fraser.
Hello.
Hello, Graham.
Hi there. Maybe I've got some good news for you. Um, before you approve the sale of the three acres uh for the pumping station for the, and for the pipeline right-of-way, um, the district should only sell uh easement rights, I believe, should only sell easement rights for the pipeline uh portion, and, and not sell it in fee. This easement and uh easement encumbered, easement encumbered land uh could then be incorporated into the larger remaining parcel, remainder parcel for a higher total return to the district. So I think that why sell the, why sell it in fee in that, just in the easement? There's a lot of land in that easement. Because if you, I think if you keep it with the larger parcel, you'll get more money. So if that has been considered, uh, I'd say go ahead. If it has not, I'd sort of put it on the, on the back burner until, till your engineers or your right-of-way people or whatever examine that pretty important point.
Thank you, Graham.
I, I speak as a, as a civil engineer, prior uh engineer for the district as well, so it's just a little freebie.
Thank you. All right. So do we have any questions for staff?
Just to confirm that we did a wide range of considerations thing uh for the property, both together uh as one parcel and split and all the other options too.
We did. We considered different options.
And we will be um.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Andy.
Oh, no, I was just summarizing that, yes, we did look at different options, and we looked at how we can, um, when the city expressed interest, how we can work with the city, and then also work with the developer and have the, have all of us work together to um have this agreement be successful. Trustee Blessing?
Yeah, no, I was just gonna add in there that the, the cooperative agreement between the city and the proposed developer on that site will also deal with or anticipating, deal with the issues of design and use of the um potential user or uh landscape of the easement area as well as the uh pump station as well as the lift station as well. So all of that is, is part of that consideration, so that the, for the parcel can be uh best utilized.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
My first and a second. Any more questions or comments, colleagues? Right, seen none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item seven C, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on to item eight A. The approval of the continuation of electronic virtual board meetings through the month of February twenty twenty-two. We actually have public comment on this as well.
Brad Tobias.
Hello, Brad.
Hey, how's it going? Sorry, I was, uh, I was trying to get, get connected on this. Um, so thank you for the time, um, and uh, um, and, and everything that they, they all do for our, our district. Um, but I just wanted to uh simply just ask a few questions regarding this uh, this Zoom platform. Uh, first one being, what is the actual reasoning? Reasoning for the Zoom-only meetings? Um, and also, uh, you know, my, I'm assuming that it's, it's because of health concerns. Uh, however, I just want to go and in, insert out a few tidbits here for this. Uh, checking today, the California COVID website, uh, numbers are going down in almost all metrics. Um, you know, here, here, and here in San, San Diego County. Um, also, there's a lot, a great deal of uh, of places that are actually meeting in person, uh, places like the California Assembly, Oceanside City Council and gathering seven all over, such as downtown markets, movie theaters, um, even at the last board meeting, uh, it was being mentioned that uh exclusively UMS admins uh were, were boasting about being at a large event uh for, for L, L would be LGBQ plus. They had you know, large numbers. And, and I mean, if they're able to meet up, I think, I think it's, it's not without question that, you know, that we can't do in-house in-person uh meetings, you know, out there at Childish Middle School. The reason I say this is because Zoom is inefficient. There are technical difficulties. These uh, these presentations that are given are hard, you've heard of you. And uh, these are things that, that even you board members experienced just tonight. Um, so, so it, it, you know, another assumption is maybe is, is this about control and comfort? You know, control being that our mics can be cut off at any, anytime. Uh, you know, to the point where we're not, where we're not able to voice our opinion um in comfort uh by simply just being at our home. You know, you, you know, Mike Blessing, I see that you're in there in your home right now. Um, and uh, and, and everybody else is like, has like the background going on. Um, it's, um, also, my, Mike Blessing, uh, you, you mentioned last uh specifically, and I quote at the last meeting, I don't want to be in a room with a bunch of angry parents. I, I, I don't feel like that's a, you know, a, a good enough reason, uh, as, as, as like, as like the officials, you deserve to be in front of us. Um, lastly, I just want to suggest the hybrid method. You know, you could do, do the in-person and, you know, the Zoom. Um, also, put these uh back on a K O C T uh YouTube page, let, let them stream them uh for multiple, or, or not multiple, but mass uh presentation. And uh, with that, I, I owe my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
I know we're not supposed to respond, but um, there's a correction in terms of my attendance. I don't know who said that. But my attendance was not what you said it was.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, uh, just under a a, a second, and just under a comment. I, I don't think I said that, but I may have said that in the context of uh, I didn't want to be in an angry room arguing with parents about whether they needed to wear a mask or not uh or attendees at our meeting, because that's the sit, situation and, and um that we would have at, at, at a public meeting in a, in a facility at such as Chavez. Um, and I didn't want to repeat those issues that I've seen in other places in the, in the county. Um, so that's my desire there. Um.
I'm, I'm gonna weigh in just because usually I'm on the other side of this one, but I think given the really incredible nature of the spread right now, uh, I would actually support this for the next month, and then um, assuming the virus does what we think it's going to do, I would go back to voting to be returning in person, because I think that's the best way for us to run our meetings in front of uh people who we are accountable to. So I, I, I support the motion.
Is that a second, Eric? So we have Stacy made the motion. Are you seconding?
My, my second.
Oh, my apologies for missing that.
I'm just gonna weigh in just a second real quick, though. Sorry, guys. Um, I know that for myself, you know, being at home and just kind of quarantining myself because of, you know, already being exposed and, and having to deal with all of this, and I know, like, even just tonight, I've had an episode of just where I had to kind of go off screen and just kind of turn up my air a little bit more just to get the meeting. Being in a, in an open environment, it's not like I can get up and walk out. So, but being able to be here in the meetings and be full-on just of participating and doing what's best for our students, that's always been very important to me. So I thank you all for just continuing to have these meetings and to opening them up so our families can be still a part of them and being in our Zoom, because even when they're not able to be here, they're still able to participate and listen and and get into the meetings and, and say what they need to say, you know, and so I thank you all for that.
Thanks, Raquel. So I have a first and a second to keep our February twenty twenty-two meeting in, in a virtual format. I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor of supporting that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries five zero, and we'll revisit that next month. Moving on to item, item eight B was pulled, so we're moving on to eight C. That's the approval of revisions to board policy three, four, five, two, Student Activity Fund.
Thank you, President Begin. This policy is being updated to clarify that the policy does not apply to school-connected organizations that are not composed entirely of students or subject to the board's control and regulation. For example, PTOs, PTAs. This section on fundraising adds a reference to the policy that addresses online fundraising and addresses fundraising events that involve the sale of food and/or beverages. The section on management and reporting of funds is being updated to reflect governmental accounting standards, Board Statement eighty-four, which provides that if the district has administrative or direct financial involvement with the student organization's assets, as defined, the Student Activity Fund may be considered a governmental fund, subject to specific accounting and financial reporting requirements. This update also includes additional district information and clarifies the district's procedures in regards to student activity funds. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the proposed provisions to board policy three, four, five, two, Student Activity Funds.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Just a second. Any questions for Dr. Norman? Seen none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight C, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, motion carries five zero. Moving on to eight D, approval of revisions to board policy four, one, two, seven, four, two, two, seven, four, three, two, seven, temporary athletic team coaches.
Thank you, Dr. Begin. This policy update is recommended to reflect the California A B sixteen thirty-nine, which requires coaches beginning July first, two thousand seventeen, to complete a training course related to the nature and warning signs of sudden cardiac arrest and to retake such a course every two years thereafter. The policy also allows a coach to submit either the Activity Supervisor Clearance Certificate or the Department of Justice and Federal Bureau of Investigation Criminal Background Check. The athletic programs in Oceanside Unified School District have been adhering to this law since it was put into effect. This policy is just updated language for the board.
Thank you, Dr. McEachran. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions? Right, seen none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight D, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries five zero. Last one on this, H E, approval of revisions to board policies four, one, four, three, four, two, four, three stations and consultation.
This policy has been uh updated to reflect the new law, A B sixteen eleven, and in two thousand fourteen, which requires reasonable written notice to the exclusive employee representative whenever the district intends to make whenever the district intends to make any changes in matters within the scope of negotiations. The policy also clarifies related meetings that may be held in closed session and adds language on providing release time for a reasonable number of employee representatives for meetings and negotiating and for the process of grievances.
All right. Any questions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second. Any comments, questions? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving item eight E, say aye.
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 All right, we got motion carries five zero. I didn't see any opposes. All right, moving on to the next part of our meeting, this is public on non-agenda items. Right now, we have we have eight public comments. I'm looking at my board members. Can we take a five-minute break before we do the public comments? I want to make sure we all have our biology break. And then we can fully focus on these comments. You guys good with that?
Yep.
All right. So if we could set the timer for five minutes and that will allow the board host to get our public comments all lined up, our people. All right, our five-minute break. Thanks for your patience. Everyone, all right, we have item nine, public comments and non-agenda items. The Board of Education is happy to receive comments. Just a little reminder that we are going to keep them to three minutes and you will see a timer on the screen. So I have, I recognize a lot of the names on here, so we're good to go. Ann, would you like to call them up?
Yes, and they will be in this order. Brad Tobias, Todd Madison, Rosie Higera, Susan Custer, Emily Witchman, Katie Taylor, and Graham Frazier. And I'll come back after Rosie speaks to call the other ones again.
Okay, thank you. So let's go ahead and start with Brad.
Hey, everybody. It's good to see you again. Has my time started?
Yeah, it just started.
Okay, awesome. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so I'm should be real quick. I got a lot to cover here. So firstly, I just want to go ahead and recommend that CRT or Ethnic Studies be placed under review. Reason being, there's really no, you know, as, you know, studies have gone on and it's been in the media and everything like that, there's not a whole lot of long-term benefit to it. The short-term benefit is maybe a small, little bit of political capital. Other than that, long-term, it will divide communities, schools, it will badly impact the community and will be a poison for Oceanside. And, you know, as far as economic development and everything else like that. Which brings me to my next point on the curriculum for Ethnic Studies. By law, 20 US Code 1232H for Protection of People Rights, Section A. It states, "All instructional materials shall be available to parents, guardians, and students." Everything I've viewed on websites for the, for the, for the schools, for the high schools at least, all this is give you like a simple, well-crafted statement with no info, i.e. books, some of my materials, teacher items or anything like that. Therefore, you know, I, again, making a recommendation that, you know, that, that material be available for the students. I mean, for the students, for, you know, the parents, guardians, and just the, and just the community as a whole, you know, you know, give that, you know, the give, give, give us that transparency that we deserve. And my last point is violence around the schools. Last semester, there were three acts of violence on Mission Avenue by Oceanside School. I know that, you know, it's not part of the jurisdiction for like the Oceanside, for OUSD security and all that. I know that that's more of an Oceanside PD problem or not problem, but issue. But I just want to know what the school board has taken, what measures the school board has taken to curb this. I believe that there could be things done. And I think, you know, regardless on what our views are politically, the safety of the children is paramount and the safety of the students is number one. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Brad. Our next speaker is Todd Madison. Hi, Todd.
Hi. Thanks for having me. So tonight, I'd like to talk about the incredible importance to our kids of having a board that actually puts their interests first. As parents, I think we would all agree, there's nothing more important to us than our kids. And getting them ready to be happy, successful adults requires both good parenting and a good education to build on. My kids attended Oceanside Unified Schools end to end. They got a great education from some wonderful teachers. My wife and I know a lot of great teachers, support staff, principals, and administrators, the best of people. But like any organization, the district needs to have a clear direction and management guidance to make it all work together, particularly management willing to make difficult decisions when needed. They also need to make sure they're paying attention to the needs of their customers and particularly those who have to represent those customers actually do that. That's what's wrong with Oceanside Unified. So much potential but squandered by a board that simply will not consider putting kids' interests first. We've seen that over and over again in the last couple of years. How many 5-0 votes have we seen in support of virtually anything any special interest asks for, except for what parents ask for, right? If you now recognize this, if you're a person who sees problems and fixes them, how about helping fix this one? How would you like to run for school board this year? Next year is an election year. It's time for parents to step up and take control of our board to make it work for kids, not for special interests. Districts one, three, and four are up for election. New maps were shown in this meeting. If you're listening to this, you care about the education of our kids. If you live in any of those areas, you owe it to those kids to step up and run. I'm a co-director of the Oceanside Parent Association, and the Parent Association is planning on doing what it can to support kids-first candidates in the next election. If you'd like to discuss what running for board is all about, email us. The email address is oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. That's oceanside.usd@parentassociation.net. And lastly, we all know that school choice is the real solution. Real power comes when parents can simply choose a different school if their board, their district, or their union are putting themselves first, not our kids. We need signatures on our petition to get it on the ballot. We're doing great so far, but we've got a big job ahead of us. Join us to help that by going to californiaschoolchoice.org and signing up to help, then getting out and getting signatures for the effort. That's californiaschoolchoice.org. Let's take back our education system and make it work for our kids, not for the special interest for a change. Run for board, get signatures for the petition. Thank you very much.
All right, our next speaker is Rosie Higera.
Yes, hi. In listening to the meeting, it seems like the board was not very informed about the boundaries that are going to take place with our district. There was a lot of confusion, it seemed like, and even though those maps have been out for at least a month, I think that you guys should have been well-versed in all of that. Also, it looks like there's a lot of spending, unnecessary spending on furniture that we don't need for our kids. Millions of dollars on furniture that you guys haven't even looked at. It seems like there's a lot of spending for equity, inclusion, diversity, for salaried staff that are working on this curriculum as well. I don't know if you have seen the recent census in Oceanside, but according to the census, our population majority is white, 46.8%. And our next category is Hispanic people, 36.2%, which is a huge population. And it doesn't seem like you're really in touch with the needs of the Latino families. Latino families are predominantly conservative. We are for families. We are for marriage between one man and one woman. Family is the bedrock of society for us, and we believe the nation as well. We love what they're doing in Virginia with our new governor, the new governor there, Yonkin. How he's taking a stand and he's doing executive orders that are actually benefiting families for the protection of families and children. Not like the Oceanside Unified is doing with our students and our curriculum. The superintendent is showing executive orders that is reviewing all the policies for the Department of Education to identify those curriculums that promote inherently divisive concepts, and such policies are going to be ended. And so he's instituting superintendents and boards that are actually fighting for families, not introducing curriculum that is divisive and that is hateful and that is racist. And so it looks like we need, it looks like Eric Joyce, Eleanor Evans, and Dr. Vitelli, you guys have all made it very clear that your agenda is LGBTQ, and you're not promoting families. You're, you are catering to a very small minority of the population, and you're introducing this into the curriculum, and it's something that's totally divisive and unnecessary. We actually need to teach history and civics and math and things that will prepare our students to be global leaders in our economy and in different industries. But this is not what we want as parents, and it seems very obvious that the board has not talked to the community and asked what we want.
All right. Thank you, Rosie. Ann, will you call up our next speaker?
Yes, our last four is Susan Custer, Emily Witchman, Katie Taylor, and Graham Frazier.
Good evening, Susan. You're up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Susan.
Okay. I'm wondering, first of all, if you can tell me how many members of the community are on this Zoom call? Is there any way you can let me know that?
I'll tell you, it's 97.
97, thank you. Tonight, I'd like to talk about school choice. Choice due to the low test scores, all of the school closures, mandates, and inherently divisive concepts being taught in the public schools, it is time for school choice. The primary purpose of the public school system is to educate our children and provide the skills necessary to succeed in life. Because this is not being done, we need the taxpayers' money to follow the child and not the school. We're currently circulating a petition to put school choice on the November ballot. If passed, $14,000 per year would be put into an education savings account for each child if they are not attending public school. This account would be held by the state and could be used for private school, homeschool, charter schools, or appropriate schools. Any money that is not used in the current school year would be held in the child's account. Any unspent money would continue to accrue every year while the child is in grades K through 12. After graduating from 12th grade, unspent money can be used for college or vocational training until the age of 30. The ability for parents to choose their child's school will, we hope, improve the public schools. We, this will encourage the public schools to focus on the children and their education, and we hope in the teaching of inherently divisive concepts which do not belong in the school. Financial impact studies show that after 7% of the students leave public schools, most likely there will be more funding per student available. Also, there'll be no structural impact on the current school system. Today, there's much talk about equity in every aspect of society. The school choice, this, the school choice program would ensure more equity in the education of children. With this program, not only would the elite be able to afford private school, but also the financially disadvantaged. At this moment, the wealthy have school choice. With this program, all parents would have school choice. That is true equity. The school board frequently talks about equity, so please help us make sure that all Oceanside children have the equity that is so important to this Oceanside school board. In addition to equity, we no longer want our children in schools teaching inherently divisive concepts. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Our next speaker is Emily Witchman. Hi, Emily.
Hi. I'm talking about the Ethnic Studies Committee. Many of us were very happy to hear about the Ethnic Studies Committee starting in January. I have not been contacted on the date and I have not been contacted on the date and time, but I understand it will be a digital on the 25th of January. The meeting is two weeks away. I was also told that we would get a schedule of the meetings. So far, we have not been contacted. John Carroll, Lillian Adams, Willie Buchanan. I'm understanding the way the district is training the new people in transparency and to follow through. 20 years ago, the district lost 8,000 kids. Since, 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 since that time, the district has lost 8,000 kids and added more administrators, yet functions ineffectively. What is wrong with a newer system that's in place? I realize that there are many unpredictable situations that's happened in this past year and a half. But to paralyze our bright and best administrators from getting their jobs done is a disservice to our students. Teachers seem to be on committees and collaborating with each others. As community members, we also are able to attend meetings and collaborate with the district. Be, please be transparent and welcoming to those who are not employed by the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Taylor. Good evening, Katie. Katie, are you there? I see your name on the screen.
Okay, good evening, school board and Superintendent Vitale. The following is outstanding leadership in education from the Commonwealth of Virginia, Office of the Governor, Executive Order Number One, 2022, ending the use of inherently divisive concepts, including critical race theory, and restoring excellence in K-12 public education in the Commonwealth. By the virtue of authority vested in me as governor, I hereby issue this executive order to ensure excellence in K-12 public education in the Commonwealth by taking the first step on day one to end the use of inherently divisive concepts, including critical race theory, and to raise academic standards. The future of the Commonwealth of Virginia is chiefly dependent on the education of our children. Education has a life-shaping power. Our education system should install Virginia students in love for lifelong learning to ensure they become their own best teachers. We must enable our students to take risks, to think differently, to imagine, and to see conversations regarding art, science, and history as a place where they have a voice. Political indoctrination has no place in our classrooms. The vast majority of learning in our schools involves imparting critical knowledge and skills in math, science, history, and reading, and other areas that should be non-controversial. Inherently divisive concepts like critical race theory and its progeny instruct students to only view life through the lens of race and resumes as some students are consciously or unconsciously racist, sexist, or oppressive, and other students are victims. This denies the students the opportunity to gain important facts, core knowledge, formulate their own opinions, and to think for themselves. Our children deserve far better from education than to be told what to think. Instead, the foundation of our education system should be built on teaching our students how to think for themselves. Virginia must renew its commitment to teaching our children the value of freedom and the thought of diversity of ideas. We must equip our teachers to teach our students the entirety of history, both good and bad. From the horrors of slavery and segregation, and the treatment of Native Americans to the greatest generation against the Nazi empire, the heroic efforts of the Civil Rights Movement, and our country defeated the Soviet Union of Communism. We must provide our students with the facts and the context to understand these important events. Only then will we realize Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream, "We will not judge by the color of their skin, but the content of their character." The Constitution of Virginia requires that governor shall take care that the laws be faithfully executed. It further provides the right to be free from governmental discrimination on the basis of religion, conviction, race, color, sex, critical race theory, and related concepts are teaching our children to engage in the very behavior that-
Thank you, Katie. All right, our last speaker tonight is Graham Frazier. Hello, Graham.
Hi again, guys. I am sorry you didn't understand my previous comment on the, on the property issue. I feel they threw away many thousands of dollars, but that's, that's the way I guess you like to work. My comment tonight is about student performance and progress. Based on the most recent published results from the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress for the California Science Test, CIST, for the, for those that know, please let the following sink in. For Oceanside High School, 83% of students fail to meet the standard for science set by the state. 83%. Okay, the average failure for the state is, oh, is 71%. In other words, the, the entire system is failing our kids. And in your mindless befuddlement over all the minutia of the education business that you've been talking about tonight, you just continue to move the chairs around on the Titanic. In complete dereliction of your duty towards, to continue to allow this to happen to our kids and to our society, you need to be ashamed. Not once have I been seeing this board discuss the central issue of performance at the district, where you've got 83% failing in science in the high school. Do you call yourself board members? You must be so bored that you can't even think. Be aware that this is your report card for the future position in government or elsewhere, and it's a dismal F. I suggest you find another vocation where you can be effective. It's a very sad situation, and especially sad for the kids we have elected you to protect from this evil mistreatment. I'm really ashamed of all of you.
Are you done, Mr. Frazier?
I think I'm done.
All right, have a nice night. That concludes our public comments this evening. The next thing on our agenda is a board staff discussion. I'm looking at my board colleagues. Do any of you have a final thought tonight that you'd like to share before we wrap up and adjourn? We have to adjourn to closed session, and then we have to come back, just so you know.
I just want to reiterate what we've said before, that statements like "the Latino community does not support people in the LGBT community," or "we're for families and not for LGBTQ," is not the Oceanside that I know, and it's not the Oceanside that we stand for. We stand by all of our families, no matter who they love.
Thanks, Eric. And I'd like to say, I'm a parent, I'm a parent, several of our board members are parents. So when we say students first, that is front and center because we have our own students in the school system. Go ahead, Eleanor, sorry.
I'm very much in agreement. Unfortunately, I missed most of the public comments. We had a blackout in the area. So I missed it, but I want to say most emphatically, I believe in family, I believe in our scholars, and we're doing all we can in terms of promoting quality public education for Oceanside. Thank you.
Thanks. Raquel or Mike, any final thoughts?
I just want to thank all the staff. As we came back, it was just kind of a little crazy with everybody right now. I'm trying to do all the testing and the close contact stuff and tracing and everything. So just all the support staff, all the teachers, all, everybody, just, everybody's been working together within the community, for the community, just coming together, even for each other in different circumstances. I thank you all for that. And so kudos to everybody that's just being there for one another and continue to do that, please.
Welcome back. Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right, we are going to adjourn our open session, and board members are going to go into closed session using the link that was provided earlier today. And Dr. Vitale, we're going to come back and report out. Is that correct?
That is correct. We'll come back to this meeting to report out any action taken in closed session.
So any of the audience, if you, it'll be a little bit, if you just stay on the line and stay muted, you'll hear us when we come back. So, all right, board members, let's adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
You got three of us?
Yeah, it looks like it. We still have 44 people out there. So welcome back. We just finished our closed session. And public report of action taken in closed session. A motion was made, seconded, and carried with a 5-0 vote to expel student 1016396 for one year beginning January 19, 2022 through January 19, 2023. Student will be eligible to return January 20, 2023 after meeting the panel's rehabilitation plan recommendations. Our next report out is a motion was made, seconded, and carried with a 5-0 vote to expel student 1035168 for two semesters beginning January 19, 2022 through December 2022. Student will be eligible to return January 9, 2023 after meeting the panel's rehabilitation plan recommendations. And our final report, a motion was made, seconded, and carried with a 4-1 vote to accept the panel's recommendation to not expel student 1038374 and instead assign students to Special Education Support Services as independent study or home hospital instruction until appropriate educational alternative education placement can be secured by the district. And that is all we have to report out in closed session. Thanks for all of you that stuck around. Have a nice night. Take care and stay healthy. Bye.
Bye.
Night.